August 17th, regular Newton Falls council meeting to order. If you could turn off your cell phones or set them to vibrate and stand for the pledge in a time of prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to join together here as citizens in Newton Falls to be about the community's business. We do ask that you watch over us and direct us, given us wisdom, and that you would be glorified in the process. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Ray Meyer.
Here.
Beria.
Here.
Savet.
Here.
Alberini.
Here.
Waddell.
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we move Dr. Verbanic and Mr. Ken LaShock up from the public comments to the special presentations where it probably should be.
Do you want to move it in front of the...
Right to, right now, special presentations.
Okay. Okay, roll call on that.
Beria.
Here.
Savet.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Ray Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, so special presentation. Which one do we want to do first?
There's only one. Mr. LaShock and Dr. Verbanic. They've got one.
I think the docs get their stuff together.
Okay.
Justin Davis, excuse me?
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Dr. Verbanic.
My name is Dr. Charles Verbanic. I'm a partner in all of the associates of Ken LaShock. We represent the Fur Lake condo association. Kenny and I both grew up in Newton Falls. He had a Ken, his inner shop for a number of years, over thirty years. He was instrumental in liquor days and several other projects in town. Was a township trustee for twelve years. I was president of the Don't Sosse's in Newton Falls for over thirty years. I started the first urgent care in Newton Falls. Was president of Chamber of Commerce since nineteen ninety-four. I was close to tutored through several fundraisers for schools and civic organizations over the years. Okay? So, we're pretty much all about Newton Falls. So, there's building activity going on not far from Newton Falls. I'd like to know if Newton Falls has a plan for, you know, kind of getting some activities from those new businesses.
Chuck, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, okay. I can speak up. That's not my problem. What I'm saying is that there's business activity going on not far from Newton Falls in next year, two years. I want to know if the city of Newton Falls has any plans to, you know, use some of that business activity to betterment in Newton Falls.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules of council for a moment?
I'll second that.
We got a second? Okay, roll call.
Savet.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Ray Meyer.
Yes.
Beria.
Um, I...
Mr. Mayor, may I, if I could, please?
Yeah, you have...
I apologize, doctor. I thought there was a presentation to be made on your part to the council and so forth?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Okay.
I just asked, questioning.
Understand. We can't, we can't answer by council rules, so...
Somebody can.
Well, I think what we could say is that we have a, we are working on a plan. We have some thoughts and ideas that we're working through, and yes, there are some things in process.
Okay. So...
I'll make a motion to restore council roles then.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alberini.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Ray Meyer.
Yes.
Beria.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Back to regular rules.
Okay, so, this is an idea that I've originated. I found it in someplace else, and it's worked in other areas, so there's no reason why it can't work in Newton Falls. I think you should defer property tax for anybody that builds a new house in the city for fifteen years. Okay? And if a new house is built and sold in five years, the new buyer should get the ten years remaining on the property tax. Okay? Now, the people living in Newton Falls are going to say, well, that's not fair to us because these new people come in and get all the benefits. Well, if you add addition to your house or garage, something like that, to your existing structure, you get the same benefits for whatever you add on your existing structure. Okay? You know, you can say, well, we can't afford to do this. The fact is, you can't afford not to do this. You're going to cut more utilities, you're going to cut income tax, you're going to get more businesses come to town. I think if you guys and ladies have checked this out, you try to get a business to come to town, the first thing they ask for, traffic counts. Okay, I think I'm pretty sure on that. So, the more houses you have in the area, the more traffic count you're going to have, the more businesses are going to come. They see building going on, business is going to come. Okay? You know, there's more sales tax, business is going to thrive, there's more money coming to the city. So, by giving a little bit, you're going to get a lot more return. Okay? Your city income tax will increase. Okay? It's a synergistic effect. Okay? So, you're going to say, well, you're just here because you want to develop some property. Well, you have a lot of developed property, but how many do you want in Newton Falls that has property to develop? Okay? And it's good for, it's good for somebody who opens up a business in Newton Falls. Okay? So, I just want you to take a look at that and consider it. You know, it doesn't have to be exactly as I proposed it, but, you know, you need to do something out of the box because what's been going on isn't working. Okay? Nineteen sixty-something, we instituted the city mayor, I mean, the city management type of government, and we're not further along now than we were then. If anything, we're backwards. Okay, so we got the gall of oxer changed. Okay? But, along with that being said, okay, we have to treat these people decently and fairly. Okay? And we've had condos for, you know, since two thousand and two. We had to put in triple loop arc water line, we had to drill holes through five thirty-four over to the school connected to their line, we had to put reinforced wire underneath our road, okay? We had to put a sidewalk in, and the sidewalk goes to nowhere, which is, but it's good for our residents, so that's a good thing. But only one over there has a sidewalk, okay? You have a business that recently opened in Newton Falls, mainly to the town, there's no sidewalk. Okay? You've got to treat people fairly and decently. You can't give favors to some people and not to all people. Okay? Right now, we've got an issue going on with this weed ordinance, okay? You want me to read you the weed ordinance? I got comments here for all of you, if you don't know what it is. Okay? Well, I'd like to know when the, you know, you won't tell me, but I doubt if the weed ordinance was in the paper in the springtime. Can anybody tell me if it was in the paper in the springtime? What date was it?
I can't tell you the date exactly, but it was advertised properly.
What paper was it in?
Probably the legal news.
Okay, I'll take that. Section S of weed ordinance, section five five seven oh two. Okay? Premises of more than two acres include undeveloped and contiguous lots and subdivision, which when combined area exceeds two acres shall be considered farm property except for cutting or mowing, except as herein provided. The person in charge of each such farm property, when such property is not under conservation for agricultural purposes, shall be in an area of ten feet from the roadway of public or private streets, alleys which shall be in planned division of this section. This is the third time that I've got problems with this. Okay, it's explicit right there, ten feet from roadway. Anybody want, anybody want to comment on what it says here? And I think, I think when you, when you get a job done, you expect it to be completed properly. Okay? So, the city hires the way, come out and cut the lines for us, okay? Except this is what they did.
Mr. Verbanic, you approached council for a tax conversation, we're getting off track.
Okay, well, my, my, I review conversation is that you can't see people like this if you want to develop the city. If you want to give a move here, people start businesses here, you can't do this. You have to, you have, you know, that's the law, you're going to follow the law, okay? You can't, you can't, you know, you're driving a business away. I've had people that want to come into town, and since they find out about town, they don't want to be here no more. Okay? I have two offices now, one in Liberty and one in Hudson. Okay? And they said, where did you practice before? I go, Newton Falls. They go, Newton Falls? Is that where the city council is always in the news? The city officials always in the news negatively?
Okay, go back to, go back to topic.
I'm sure I didn't say this the opposite, but I'm just telling you, that's what I hear.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a...
I've been living here all my, all my life, I still live in the township here, I still provide for the city, numerous problems in the city. I want, I want the city to do well and better. Okay, I guess I'll end with that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation. Ms. King, do you want to read it?
Do you want to do that? Do you want to move that up?
Yep.
Somebody's needed to make that one.
I'll make a motion to move resolution twenty-two dash twenty, twenty, up to special presentations.
Is there a second?
We have a second.
What was the motion?
To move the... Presentation, presentation, move that up.
Justin Davis, resolution up.
Waddell.
Yes.
Ray Meyer.
Yes.
Beria.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Okay, can you read the resolution, Ms. King?
Sure. Resolution of appreciation to Justin Davis and all the volunteers and businesses who participated in volunteer projects recently completed in the city of Newton Falls. Whereas on August first, twenty twenty, Justin Davis coordinated and organized volunteers to work on several projects to beautify and enhance areas in the city of Newton Falls. And whereas, Justin, along with several other volunteers, toured the city and chose projects that they wanted to work on to make the city a place to be proud of and call home. And whereas, projects included the Ridge Road Tunnel, Veterans Falls, Stairs and Railings, Elizabeth Street Park, Sixth Street Park, First Street Posts and Paintings, basketball hoops backwards. And whereas, Justin created a list of projects and worked to be completed along with the tools and supplies that were needed, posted the projects to be tackled, and coordinated volunteers for each project to be worked on. And whereas, several businesses participated and helped by volunteers by providing food and supplies, which include Shop &amp; Save, provided donuts, Big D's, Newton Grill, cooked to lunch, and Bob's Tree Service donated twelve yards of mulch. And whereas, Newton Falls City Council would like to thank Justin Davis and everyone who participated in any way to help make this Volunteer Day a success. City Council knows that this effort took more than one person to accomplish, but it's not possible to list all the individual volunteers who worked on these projects and/or made a donation to help, however the city would like to let everyone know, we appreciate everyone for their time and involvement in this venture. Council for the city of Newton Falls, state of Ohio hereby resolves section one. Newton Falls City Council, with this resolution, would like to acknowledge and thank Justin Davis for stepping up and taking the lead in promoting positivity and beauty throughout the city, and also acknowledge all the volunteers and businesses listed in exhibit A, attached here too, as if fully rewritten herein, who helped make the city of Newton Falls a place to be proud of and call home. Section two, the Newton Falls City Council recognizes the effort, time, and determination involved in these projects completed. And section three, Newton Falls City Council urges everyone enjoining them and honoring them and the outstanding work accomplished.
Any need to move... So, move?
A second.
Let me do, roll call on this for one second. Ray Meyer.
Yes.
Beria.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
we want to identify every single one, and I'll be brief about it, but I want to make sure that everybody that stood side by side with Justin was recognized. Shop &amp; Save of Newton Falls, Big D's Newton Grill, Bob's Tree Service, D and M Construction, Melanie Newbrow, Robert McLaughlin, Matt Evans, Chris Fernandez, Matt Nemmett, C.J. Shelton, Lacey Hacker, Ron Hacker, Bill George, Randy Grunder, please step forward as your name is called. Rachel Matouzy, Jack Withrow, Jackson Withrow, Zach Savet, councilman, you want to take your place next to these fine folks? Taryn Jorgalis, Ryan Rabel, Courtney Jorgalis, Molly Howard, Simeon Howard, Christine Stinson, Jimmy Hold, Anthony Klein, plus his two daughters, Sandy Gourvet, plus her son and daughter, Frank Spaino, Cole Marquette, Ian King, Blaine Mann, Joey Gosick, Nick Lampman, Nick Henley, Ethan Lingo, Drew Montgomery, James Wissonant, Connor Kias, Zach Selman, Nick Brown, Alex Stinson, Zach Stinson, Shirley and Ron Rayburn, in memory of Cindy Lyons-Babyak, Mark Stimperts. It's back there, come on up, Mark. Marilyn Waddell, I see her up on the balcony, come on down. Councilman Lyle Waddell, Councilman Terry Alberini, Missy Scott, Frank HuKerry, Jamie Waltermeyer, Jana Strach, Eric and Phil, last names missing, Dave Davis, Nancy James, John Nemmett, Jill Powell, Brent Powell, Jamie Colas, Kim Colas, John Richards, Jackie Young, Jen Zamamra, Jim Zamamra, Tracy Colasimo, Tom Colasimo. I saw them there in the back, step forward, please. Judy Hood, Pat Brenner, Patricia Benides, Blaine Cox, Amanda Winland, Kim Gregg, Adam Harris, Jose the Tunnel Guy. He's working on his green card, we think, folks. Rudes, Special Services, Roy Clutch, and also all the fine folks over at Ace Hardware. And, Mr. Mayor, we may have even missed a few, but what a stunning list. And the tribute, at least as far as the city is concerned, from the manager's office isn't just the outstanding work that they did, but Justin Davis summoning all this firepower in labor and commitment is a real tribute to your own commitment to the city.
Mr. Lynch, Eric and Phil with no last names. Eric's last name is McDonald, and Eric and Phil are from the Falls River Rehab, they're residents there, and they've been here, they've been doing a lot of work.
Hey, I just wanted to say again, thank you particularly for bringing your community and technical work and individuals like yourself and community leaders in the community because of the reason why our community is so good and so special.
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, you know, I just heard that they saw just the amount of people that showed up, you know, last year. Well, first of all, I'm on the baseball, we're making the park look good, we want to turn this playoff, travel ball, so, we want to try and make it look good, so, lucky with all the people that are here, it's been a great work, and I appreciate it. Hopefully, next year, we can have like this, so, keep going, and thanks again to all of you guys and everybody in our community. Dr. Brad.
Again, your name, your address, limit, two agenda items in three minutes. Go on once, go on twice.
I'm Tessa Swetson, two twenty Ashlyn Court. And I'm actually here to speak on the minutes. I did some research today, and I went back reading some of the recordings from March, and then I got to May, and I was having a difficult time figuring out where the meeting was actually held. I remember in the summer, early spring, we had a couple meetings that were held at the football field. So, as I was reading the May eighteenth minutes, I couldn't remember if that was one of the minutes, one of the meetings that was held at the football field. Then I got to the June first meeting, and I read part of those minutes, and then I discovered, okay, that one was definitely held at the football field. And then the ballgame one was also held at the football field. And I've noticed recently, what my point is, I want to get to, is regardless of where these meetings are being held, it says that they're being held in council chambers, and this is the sanctuary of the congregational church. To my knowledge, we don't own this building, this area has not been desanctified, and the football field was certainly not council chambers. So, I would encourage council to edit, ask the clerk to edit the minutes, don't not approve them tonight because the ones that you're supposed to approve tonight say that you were in council chambers, and this is not council chambers. And I'd like the clerk to go back and edit and correct the actual location of the city council meetings. Thank you.
Agenda items, make sure they're agenda items. Thank you, sir.
Tim, since two five three, I got a couple things. Number one, ordinance under unfinished business ordinance, twenty twenty twenty-four. I don't understand why we would reallocate our building funds into, I don't have the actual, because you guys don't supply what the actual resolutions are, but whatever those extra funds are that we're taking out of the building fund into, I believe it was electric fund or the general fund or something. Why are we getting rid of a building fund? We owe money on the building, we need to keep upkeep on this building if we continue to purchase it. I just think it's a poor, poor choice to get rid of a building fund. You guys got to divvy out your money now so we don't have to continue to take out loans on loans on loans on loans like what we've currently done. Again, let me remind you that we took out a loan on a twenty-one thousand dollar fence that we didn't need to take out a loan for. So, if we put a little bit of money out, we can save that for when we need it for the building. Number two, resolution twenty-three twenty, entering into an agreement with Shelby and Sands. Where's the information on that? How can we enter into a contract without actually dollar figures and seeing the contract? I know it's a revision, but if we had to go through the revision and have to get new signatures signed, it's, then it shouldn't be null and void as it stated as a new contract because we just had to go through that with a referendum. And then number three is the motion for the Parks Rec. Thank you for whoever finally stepped up and put that on, on, on the agenda tonight. There's no sponsors that listen tonight, but that's something that we should have been doing all along, you know, going to our committees first that we had in place and then bringing it back to council. I know that's just a suggestion on, on whatever that is on their behalf. However, it's a first step, so thank you for doing that. And then number four, nothing left, but he did a wonderful job, and I just want to say that and appreciate what, what he organized, so thank you.
Brian Crop, two four seven, I'm sorry about that, two four seventy Liston Street. I actually wanted to speak on the motion that Tim just mentioned. I don't have an issue with a motion, or I don't have an issue with one of the committees or boards actually participating in what they're designed to do. No problem with that at all. I think it's a great idea, it should have been done a long time ago, I don't know why now all of a sudden. I have an idea why. This past week, Mr. Lynch sat in on a meeting that had to do with one of our, with our commerce park, with one of our parks here in town, and sat in and was well aware of discussions had as far as doing betterment to one of our parks. And now, all of a sudden, there's going to be a motion, and there's no, there's no list of who made this motion, there's no name attached to it that I saw in the printouts anywhere, unless somebody could provide that, I haven't seen the name of the motion. That would be nice, I would like to see that. But also, why all of a sudden is that happening now with just this one committee or just this one board? It doesn't make any sense. And I'd really like an answer or some kind of explanation why that is, and adding another layer doesn't help. When the city hasn't really done what they needed to do, you have to have people like Justin, which Justin, thank you, and all the volunteers, all the volunteers, so much, we appreciate doing that, but if the city had done what it needed to do, people like Justin wouldn't have to clean up and do all the work that the city's supposed to be doing and have to have been doing all this time. So, some explanation as to why there's going to be a new layer to the parks would be, would be really nice, and a name on the motion would be good as well. Thank you.
Okay, if not, we'll go into reports. Starting off with mayor's report, and I don't have anything to report tonight. Go to council, Ward one, Mr. Savet.
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, Ward two, Mr. Beria.
We will meet a utility, a review board will meet Thursday, the twentieth. We have three pending appeals. Thank you.
Okay, Ward three, Mr. Waddell.
Yes, I attended a fire board meeting. I also attended two virtual meetings with the Ohio Municipal League on some legislation that's going on in Columbus that's kind of important to small communities or actually all municipalities across the state. And to answer a couple of questions to Dr. Verbanic, a couple of years ago, they came out with a new tax structure for a new construction. We have talked about that, we haven't had anybody approach us to take advantage of that yet, but those are things that are out there that we can consider, and the economic development team certainly would consider those if they came to us to look at them and see how they would benefit everybody, but what you suggested is out there, we just haven't had anybody, you know, ask for those. So, if you've got some plans and some thoughts, certainly like to see them and present them. To the Park and Recs, a couple of meetings ago, maybe the last meeting, I told Mr. Stinson that, you know, we should go through our committees to do things. Park and Rec should be notified when there are projects going along and things are going to be done, and I, I think all of our committees need to be utilized... And I, I think all of our committees need, need to be utilized the way that they're supposed to be. Park and Recs has meetings. They certainly should know what's going on in the community. They should know what's going on in the parks and, uh, I did not sponsor this, but I certainly support the fact that all the committees, what needs to go in front of the committees needs to go in front of them. And I think Park and Recs, there's a lot going on out there and Park and Rec should know what's going on. And if you have, we're doing a project or somebody wants to do a project, it should go to Park and Recs. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council at large, Mr. Alberini.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to dovetail on what Councilman, uh, Waddell said and, and basically what Dr. V is talking about is tax abatements for new development as far as housing goes. And we had discussed this with the Youngstown Warren Chamber of Commerce about two years ago about this model. Uh, if a contractor comes in, lands, and this is right up your guys' alley, comes in with a new development, uh, tax abatements will be levied on our, will be issued to new residential construction for 15 years. And there are some stipulations to that. The resident has to stay there for those 15 years and can't sell the property. Um, I think the model that was brought to our, our attention was by, um, was from Cuyahoga Heights, uh, in Cleveland, right off of 77 there downtown Cleveland, where they were trying to, uh, grow the suburbs, obviously. Uh, one of the things that, that we have talked about internally here and Mr. Lynch can add on to this is having the inventory of property to support, um, development of new housing here. Uh, we're, we're quite aware of what's going on in Lordstown as far as the, um, Lordstown Electric Motors. We're aware of the home enter, excuse me, home, home goods being there, also the 2 and F billion dollar general motor, excuse me, the, uh, the joint venture between LG Electronics from Korea and General Motors. Uh, we've talked about the discussion and there's probably about 5,000 jobs being created out there in that corridor and that's just a start. So those folks are going to be looking for housing. On our part, we've had internal discussions about who do we talk to, where can we identify, uh, property, properties here in town or in the township that maybe potentially, uh, new developers would come in, including Mr. V and Mr. LaShaw, to put these housing and to offer those, uh, uh, abatements to, uh, those individuals who would move in. So, um, I also wanted to give a shout out too, by the way, before I get off track. You've seen some signs around town. Uh, if you see it, uh, I don't know the saying, I don't mark you there. Mark Stempert. There's signs around town as far as a block watch goes. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Ella Johnson for having those signs made and also Resident Dave Davis on 9th Street for kind of giving a, uh, putting an idea out there. So, uh, that's all I have. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Braymire, I apologize. I don't know, I missed you there.
That's okay.
I leapfrogged over you, so if you have anything for, to report for Ward 4?
Yes, I've, uh, attended the zoning meeting and there are several things they're working on. There's a variance and also some difficulty with the who owns what tree and needs to cut it down. Um, and then on the Park and Recs, I agree with the other councilmen that nothing should be done in those parks unless you come to the Park and Recs and talk to them and they bring it to council, discuss that. Nothing should be done in those parks. Uh, and we also are still looking into the pickleball court and the dog walking area. So we're still working on that, okay? That's all.
Okay, thank you. Finance Director, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, Your Honor, but I am available for questions.
Yes. Mr. Miss Monson, is this the finance report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I would like to, everybody to know on the record that I just received this when I sat down, so I will vote no on it tonight because I haven't had a chance to even go through it. I don't even know, it was just handed to me.
It was emailed to everyone today as well.
What's that, Miss Monson?
It was emailed to all members of council as well.
I can't hear her. What did she?
It was emailed to you today, John. She said it was emailed to you.
Oh, yeah, well, oh, okay, well, I don't, I don't look at my emails all the time. I'm running a business.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Bariak? Anybody else have any comments, questions for the Finance Director? Okay. Uh, Mr. Law Director, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, but I am also available for questions.
Okay, anybody have anything for the Law Director?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
I was gonna wait on this, but, uh, uh, back in March, I was told by Mr. Lynch I was to have all the information I want. And last meeting, if anybody remembers, the Law Director said if the city manager would authorize him to give me an opinion, and I've been, I'm not asking, excuse me, I don't want to say opinion, I just want to know the past ordinances that we use, he uses a reference along with Miller versus Cleveland 57. Well, I gave two official, and I have it on my phone, two official, uh, demands and then finally, Mr. Lynch said to Mr. Fritz, and Mr. Fritz got back and said, "Ask council." Well, I am council. I'm not asking for an opinion, I'm just asking what, I'd like to know some information. I don't think that's, uh, I think that's very relevant. And I think I'm, I, I should have had an answer, that's all. It's been three, four weeks, Mr. Fritz. Can you tell me what I have to ask council and I am council? And according to your contract, excuse me, on, on the fourth part of your contract, you are to assist any council member in, to help them.
Mr. Bariak, I will repeat what I've repeated. At the last three meetings, you and I had this conversation. Do you have the ability to get that information from me if three members of council direct me to do it?
Where is that at, sir? Where, where was that vote? Could you show me that motion was made? I can't find it.
It's not a motion, sir. It's the, you keep asking the same question at every meeting.
When did we make that official that it takes three councilmen to? I don't want an opinion. I want just what you said on council floor, not an opinion, sir.
Sir, if you, if you read the charter, the powers that council has is powers by majority, not individuals. I can't do what you want and then do what Mr. Waddell may want and what Mr. Alberini may want if they're all three separate things. My assistance to council is drafting ordinances, answering basic questions of law as it applies to your wards. It is not necessarily to render full opinions. You're asking for, I rendered my opinion when I said it passes not as an emergency but as a first reading. That's the Law Director's opinion. I, you insisted that I was doing it wrong. I indicated it is not wrong. That is how we've done it before. I don't know why you need proof on everything that happened.
I want to know where.
I, I know what you want to know, sir.
All I want to know from 1945, 55, 65, when did we do it before? Because you said we had used it in several instances in a minute since even.
As I've repeated in the last two times you asked at the last few meetings, if every time I make a decision or render a law opinion, I have to go step by step by step with you, I'm not able to do my job. If I give you those two or three opinions, what are you going to do with them, sir?
Well, no, 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 no. Don't, don't please, please, I'm, I'm not asking for an opinion. I just ask for what you stated on the floor so I can know when people ask me, I'm saying, well, this is what he backed it up with. He used this three or four times before. Where are they?
Okay, sir, we've had this conversation. There is case law that says if an emergency does not get the required votes at a first reading to pass, but it receives enough vote for a first reading, it goes on to second reading as a non-emergency. And we have done that before.
Where? When? That's all I want to know is when?
I know.
Well, when, when did we do it before? Where? That's all I want to know.
I think he's answered your question. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report? Mr. City Manager? He asked a question, he answered his question. We could sit here all night, back and forth, back and forth, answering the question in different languages and you're still getting the same answer. Mr. Law Director or Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, just a few things, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, um, uh, I did want to make sure, uh, Dr. Verbanic, the lion's share of real estate taxes in Newton Falls, uh, go to the school system, so we don't have the authority, uh, to act without them participating. I do think that's a great idea. I've probably met with seven or eight real estate developers just in the last month or so, uh, and, uh, the Economic Development Committee has had numerous discussions. Uh, we met with the Chamber of Commerce on this very topic. So the topic that you mentioned about these, um, about using the tax abatements as incentive, uh, is an important one that we continue to embrace. Uh, and when we get to that stage, the school board, because they have the lion's share of the property taxes, they're actually the ones that have to make a determination because, uh, the city receives a very tiny percentage of property taxes. Uh, in addition to that, um, we've talked about other incentives over and over again and, uh, one of the ones that we've used to our benefit has been, uh, utilities within the city boundaries. And that has, uh, functioned as a positive incentive already in the past and, uh, but a day doesn't go by where economic development for the purposes of responding to some of the things you talked about is at the very, very, uh, top of our list. Uh, and, um, we're speaking to not just real estate developers, but people who own companies, uh, that are talking about, uh, coming here. But we do, we do have to provide, uh, incentives. I think you're absolutely right in that regard. The other thing I wanted to make sure I mentioned was, uh, that, uh, Mr. Stinson talked a little bit about the, uh, about the materials of the agenda just being listed. They're on our website. I looked at this website, uh, this particular week, Mr. Stinson. That resolution you referred to, its content and every word of the actual resolution is on the city's website.
Oh, I recognize that.
Uh, uh, excuse me. I'm trying to get at is you referred to, uh, resolution 2023, excuse me, 2020-24 and said the content was not. The content is placed there.
It said contract. The content is on there, your correct, but the contract is not.
For Shelley and Sands. Yeah, well, I might as well address that as well. Um, the Shelley and Sands contract was already bid, uh, and, uh, that was done through the county. They bid that contract. All we're doing is adding First Street to the contract. We're already, we're already locked into that contract. That's done and that's already been bid. It was a public bid and the unit price from Shelley and Sands was already established. And all we're trying to do is make sure that we add First Street to that, at that same unit price. Um, and the last thing I wanted to do, Mr. Chairman, pardon my report, is remind everybody that, uh, we are swiftly having fill up, uh, the slots for the COVID-19 testing taking place at 100 Superior and there's no cost to residents of Newton Falls, Newton Township or Braceville. Um, but that will continue the rest of this week and into next week, so, uh, please do stop by and if you want to sign up, it's, uh, 330-872-0806. But those slots are, uh, filling up, uh, rapidly and there's a zero cost to each person that is, uh, is being tested. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have anything for the City Manager, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Lynch, um, could you add on, the reason why we're doing First Street this year is because there was a tremendous cost savings in doing it now and piggybacking on the existing contract?
We, yes, I presume that we were going to address that when the legislation came up, but yes, the, um, engineers are estimating by adding First Street, uh, the savings to the city is between $40,000 and $50,000.
Okay, Mr. Savet.
Yo, oh, Mr. Savet, go ahead.
Uh, Dave, can you give us an update on where the community reinvestment area, uh, legislation that we passed?
Yes, um, the CRA has been approved, um, by all the different, uh, county and state organizations and we're actually waiting for a certification so that we can have a way to present to that. As you know, there's a committee that's created for that purpose and we're waiting for our first committee meeting, so I would say we're on the precipice of it being fully implemented.
Thank you, Dave.
Did you have something, Mr. Bariak?
Yes, Mr. Lynch, when I talked to you earlier today and I asked about the finance report, you told me that Anna may get it by Monday because she'd been off.
Yeah.
Well, I, I didn't expect it to come in on my email. I might have looked at it still. If you can remember, sir, we didn't change the, uh, scope of the agenda, how we get the agenda, because we wanted to give Ms. Anna months in time to get that.
Sure.
And then, and I said, well, this is from July 30th. Today's already August 17th. And it's, I still wondered why I hadn't had it today when I talked. And you said, well, she might have it by Monday. I'm not trying to call Mrs. Monson. I'm just trying to say I might have had a chance to look at it. I, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
The agenda.
I know what you mean, Councilman Bariak. Yes, I do know what you mean.
Well, she got it together real quick then, didn't she?
Yes, she did.
Okay, any other, uh, any other comments or anything for the City Manager?
Appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, if anything else, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Uh, Ms. Braymire, do we have?
Yes. I, um, I would like to make a motion for a change tonight on the agenda, uh, to discuss council rule change.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I can't hear what she wants.
Discuss council rule change, second.
Alberini, second. Any, uh, comments?
What's the council rule change?
She's gonna get to it here.
We have to get a second, roll call, and then the discussion will be on later.
Do we have a second already?
Got a second.
Yeah, a second.
Um, roll call.
Bariak?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Okay. Um, approval of previous minutes.
So moved.
Yeah, we need to amend those to reflect, uh, Ms. Sputter's comments, I believe, to the location. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I may address the concerns I'm sure council has, council chambers are the place where council meets. It doesn't mean it's not a building or a room or specific location. So everywhere we meet, whether it's the football field, this building or chambers, uh, it's typical for government to do things. Supreme Court meets at different places. Council meets at, uh, the governor has meetings where he goes to different high schools and does the State of the Union. That's not unusual. We are in compliance by using the word chambers of council or council chambers. It's where we meet, not a specific room.
I withdraw that.
Thank you. Okay, approval of previous minutes, July 6th.
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call.
What do we vote?
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Pass, or approved. Okay, public hearings.
Public hearing ordinance 2020-23 and ordinance, amending ordinance 2016-14, amending collective income tax allocation.
So moved.
Nope.
Got you.
Is it okay, Ken? This is ordinance 2020-23, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Up in the title section of the ordinance, it says nothing about an emergency. However, down in section three, towards the bottom, it does say the city of Newton Falls in this, the reason for the emergency is to meet all financial obligations. The title does not contain anything that says emergency, but section three does say emergency. Is it an emergency or not? Section three says it's an emergency. Could somebody answer the question? Is it an emergency or not? The title does not say it's emergency. Section three does say it's an emergency.
Mr. Mayor? May I address?
You have, you have floor, Mr.?
Ma'am, the public hearings is where you are able to give your opinion what matters. It is again, not a question and answer session for council to respond to. I will, I will indicate, I will indicate, ma'am, this is a public hearing on a second reading, so whether or not it's an emergency is irrelevant. It's a second reading. The first reading's already been completed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think the fact that it's an emergency or not is irrelevant. I, it's extremely relevant. Is it an emergency or not? The title says it is not an emergency, but section three says it is.
Anybody else?
Good evening, council. Brian Crop, 247, Elizabeth Street. I just want to talk about the resolution of 2020-23, correct?
Yes.
In section three, it states that it's an emergency. It doesn't say that in the title. So I'm just going to reiterate the same thing, and you guys will stare blankly because nobody will answer the question. You guys should.
Now, may I, Mr. Mayor, may I? Point of order. I want to make a point of order.
What's your point of order?
I think, Mr. Crop, I understand what you're saying, but you know by council rules, you've done your research, that council cannot respond to questions that people have at the podium. So that's all. We can't respond.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Alberini pointed out.
We suspended the rules of council.
He could make a motion to suspend rules and answer the question. Because I've got my answer on that, too. And anybody up there on council right now can request and make a motion to suspend the rules and answer the question. That two people ask, I hope more people will come up here right now and ask the same question over and over and over until somebody answers the question. Because Mr. Fritz determines what's relevant and what's not relevant with his arrogance up there sitting behind his mask.
Point of order.
Mr. Fritz also has a juris doctrine law.
Mr. Mrazek, before you come up here, let's calm down. Let's act like adults.
Are we still in discussion?
We're still in the public hearings. We're here.
That's what I'm saying, public hearings.
Members of council, I'm addressing you with the public hearing 2020-24.
We're still on 23.
23.
We're still on 23.
You're still on 23?
Yes. Why, I ask, we were still in discussion.
Can I go up with 24?
Not until we close 23.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for 23? Okay, 23's closed.
Ordinance 2020-24, and ordinance amending ordinance 2015-15, establishing administrative overhead cost allocations to the electric refund, revenue fund, the water revenue fund, the sewer revenue fund, and the general fund.
My recollection of my last chairman office, which ended about three years ago, was we got rid of that administrative cost. I believe it was because it was illegal. I don't think there's a true, and even back then, a true way of telling how much it costs the street department or the electric department or the water department for administrative servicing. You just pluck a figure out of the air and put it in there, and it's just padding their budgets, but you're taking it out at the same time. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anybody else for this ordinance?
This is 2020-24, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I also did read through this one, and, you know, I like the way you try to say that you're being transparent. But if you really don't pay close attention to these ordinances and the way that they go about being passed, section one on this particular ordinance is making it retroactive to January 1 of 2020. Retroactive back to January 1 of 2020. And I think, I would like to know, why are we going that far back? Thank you.
Anybody else? Unfinished business.
Ordinance 2020-23, and ordinance amending ordinance 2016-14, amending collected income tax allocations.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Members of council, may I be recognized, Your Honor?
Yes.
The purpose of ordinance 20-23 is to send one additional percent to our street construction, maintenance, and repair fund. We have, it's actually the future building fund, and we are not looking for any future buildings, so it makes sense at this point in time to remove the 1% going to future buildings to street departments. That's the purpose of this ordinance, and it's effective June, going back to June 1st.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay, Mr. Bayak.
I didn't hear quite what she said. Why don't we need the 1% in the building fund anymore?
Because we have purchased this building.
Because what?
We don't have any, we're not going to be purchasing any additional buildings or future buildings.
Okay. Anything else?
And I see we're going to add another percent and a half to street construction.
1%.
That's where, mhm. Where's the other half a percent? Oh, it's only 1%.
It's not half a percent. It's 1%.
It's only 1%. You're right.
Okay. Anybody else?
None of this money from the building fund, what was specific for the building fund, Ms. Munson? What was that specific line item for exactly? Was it just for purchasing buildings, or was it upkeep?
It was only for purchasing brand-new buildings.
Any other discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recognized.
Mr. Lynch, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to address some of those questions now. That's because our agenda indicates under unfinished business, an appropriate time, where members of council, this administration can answer those questions, and it's printed on the agenda. So everybody that was talking in the public hearing section, saying, why aren't you answering any questions, could have lowered their eyes two inches and seen that there was going to be a discussion of the exact ordinance that you were bringing up to answer the question with reference to the word emergency. An emergency means it's something that's being passed with only one reading. This was scheduled to be two readings, so it should not have said the word emergency because we scheduled it for two readings to begin with. So the word emergency shouldn't have been in there because it's not an emergency.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay. If not, roll call.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Barryak?
No.
Savet?
Yes.
Pass.
Ordinance 2020-24, and ordinance amending ordinance 2015-15, establishing administrative overhead cost allocations to the electric revenue fund, the water revenue fund, the sewer revenue fund, and the general fund.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. Who made the motion? Okay. Alberini, Savet's second. Okay. Any discussion?
Under section eight, I would, the city manager, cost allocations exclude donations, grants, and reimbursements for expenditures made in the general fund to cover these expenses. In other words, we're going to switch, what is the percentages? Are we changing percentages?
No.
May I be recognized, Mr. Chairman?
You have the floor, Mr. Lynch.
We are not changing any percentage whatsoever at all.
But it's, is there a difference in where it's going? Is this going to all the general fund?
No, no.
Where's it going?
No. The purpose of this legislation is as follows. Occasionally, we receive a donation that's earmarked for something. So let's say somebody wanted to contribute X number of dollars for some administrative cost. An outside party wanted to make a donation for an administrative cost. We didn't think it made sense to spread that administrative cost to, throughout the different departments according to the ordinance that you passed years ago to distribute and allocate costs that former Councilman Zemeckis was talking about. Didn't think it made sense because the donation was paying for that particular administrative item. So it didn't make sense to charge the electric department, the streets department, all these other departments, because someone was already making a donation to pay for that administrative cost. So it didn't make any sense to charge these other parties for that. And that's the reason why the ordinance to allocate administrative costs that was passed by this council several years ago, and by the way, has been enforced on us by our auditors as something that we necessarily had to have in place to be in compliance with state law. But that's the reason why this particular ordinance is here, just we're concerned about the electric and water and sewer department being charged with costs that are already being covered by a donation. And that's the only reason for this legislation this evening.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, can I be recognized?
Sure. You have the floor.
I just want to give a historical comment on the cost allocation. Prior to 2015, city council was approving a 25% aboard cost allocation, which then the state auditor's office came in, and the previous fiscal officer to me, and council, and the audit committee, and the state auditor's office came up with a plan, which was passed with 2015-15. So this is a legal document. We follow it. There's a lot of, it's a plan that allocates the cost. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right. Roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Barryak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Pass. New business.
A resolution 21-2020, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the disciplinary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Do we have a motion?
Who is that?
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor, may I be recognized?
You have the floor.
This is a resolution to accept our rates that was part of the 2021 budget. This is the levies that are passed, and inside here, you'll see a table of a Schedule A that basically has a general fund, and it will also have our police pension fund. That is how our limitation of the inside millage for property tax is fulfilled by the tax commission. That is what you're approving.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Braymire?
Yes.
Barryak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Pass.
Resolution 23-2020, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Shelly and Sands pursuant to their June 10, 2020 bid through the county engineer for the First Street resurfacing project.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second? Mr. Savet, discussion.
May I be recognized, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, this has been a historic year for a lot of reasons. One of them is just the fact that this is the first time in the history of the city that the Ohio Public Works Commission has awarded three projects to Newton Falls. And we've heard a lot of discussion up on this council using the words "infrastructure." Well, that's what the OPWC is all about, infrastructure. And the three projects that we've been awarded are the resurfacing of First Street, a sanitary sewer project on Medley Avenue, in addition, on Washington Street, a storm sewer project. Unfortunately, the OPWC, in making those awards, also put a freeze on the authorization for distribution of those monies for those projects in 2020, up until about three and a half, four weeks ago, which is a big problem for us and for all the other communities that had the freeze on, because that meant we couldn't go out for bids until we got this authorization. Because the finance director has to sign a certificate saying that there is a source of funds, and so all these projects, although approved, were sort of forcibly put on the back burner, and those projects, we received permission to go out and bid them at the beginning of 2021, and we would still be eligible for the money. So that's the good news. The bad news is they released the money so late, it's virtually impossible to go out for bids and capture the construction return bids from these companies in a way that is financially attractive. Because what all the construction companies are saying, what, are you kidding me? It's August. You're going to bid now in August? We're already tied up with projects, and our engineers have met with us and indicated that if we did bid those projects out this year yet, we're basically forcing their construction in 2020, and the cost of each one of those projects would be many tens of thousands of dollars higher in cost. Shelly and Sands, well, I take that back. First Street was one of those three projects, and we all thought to ourselves, well, it's great we got the funding for them, but it's too bad we're just going to have to wait till 2021 so we can get some decent bids. And that was our engineer's recommendation. But I did notice one thing. This year, some of you have noticed that we did some roads this year. By the way, a number of roads in Newton Falls done in 2020 exceeds that was done in 2019, and the amount in 2019 is the largest amount of roads we've done on a local basis in a very long time. In any case, and I'm going to try to give you the Reader's Digest version, members of council, those of you that are still with me, the contract for the roads that we've already done this year was bid out in a public bid by the county engineer, publishing those bids so that we could get competitive bids, but those bids were published much earlier this year because our own local funds are tied up by the OPWC. So we were able to get aggressive bids on our own roads, and as I mentioned at the football stadium, when Mr. Richter was complaining that we weren't getting roads, I explained to him, wait a minute, we've got bids coming in right now. So we bid it out on a timely basis, and the winning bidder on a per-unit cost was a company called Shelly and Sands, and we got a very aggressive, low bid. So they've been doing all of their work, and we've been moaning the fact that 2021 is when First Street will be bid out, and the cost will be a little bit higher in 2021 because year after year they go up about 5% to 10%. But I noticed that Shelly and Sands contract allowed for adding of streets. So I contacted the OPWC, and I said, look, we got a great bid on streets on a per-unit cost here in 2020, and you've approved funding for the resurfacing of First Street. Why can't I amend the Shelly and Sands contract if we can lock them into the low bid they gave us on a per-unit cost and still do First Street? So I had a meeting with our engineers, and they said, if you do that, you'll save the city between $40,000 and $50,000 on the resurfacing of First Street. So I went to the OPWC, said, is it okay if we do this? Mr. Lynch, will those things bid out? Yes, they were. Did they meet the state requirements for prevailing wage, union wage? Yes, they did. Did they meet the equal opportunity requirements? Yes, they did. Did they meet all the other federal and state and county requirements? When the county bid that out to Shelly and Sands to satisfy the OPWC requirements, they said, yes, they did. Green light. Well, so now we've got approval from all these different folks, and then we went to Shelly and Sands. That was the key pivotal point to this. Would they hold their unit price? We couldn't put a gun to their head, and they agreed that they would stick to that unit price, and they'd be willing to come back into Newton Falls and do it at the low rate right here in 2020. One other hurdle was left in this little saga, and that was to go to the law director and say, can we do that? And he said, you can, but you have to go to council and get it approved by an ordinance. And I want them to come back shortly, excuse me, a resolution. And I want them to come back and get that passed this evening, and this is the last piece of the puzzle. It will be the largest construction project that Ward II has seen in many, many, many years, and we're looking forward to it with the hopes that council will give us a positive viewpoint this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are my remarks on this legislation.
Any other comments on this?
Just discussion now?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch, did I understand you to say right now that this First Street is a new project? In other words, is this a new project?
It's an old street, so I don't know if it's considered to be a new project.
It wasn't on your last bid.
I'm sorry?
Was it on the last set of streets?
It was on the old. Uh, it was on the OPWC list, it was not on the county's list, that's right.
No, I'm saying on the streets we did. Look, I want to start asking some questions, and I hope they'll waive my three minutes because they waived yours right now. But anyhow, I want to, I'd like to know, how much did we spend already on the roads this year? Ms. Munson, can you tell me that?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's about, it's about $215,000.
Excuse me, you don't know?
I've not seen the invoice.
Well, can I ask another question? The roads that we did, are they paid for?
We have an invoice.
Are they paid for?
I said I don't have an invoice, so therefore the roads are not paid for as of right now.
They don't have an invoice until about October, November, councilman.
Well, I don't understand, because Ms. Munson, on May 18, you said we only had $50,000 that was budgeted this year. Where did we come, where were we coming up for the rest of the money? Where's the rest of the money coming from?
Mr. Bariak, if you look at your 2020 budget, we actually appropriated approximately $80,000 to $88,000 for roads. And in addition, I did speak earlier at a council meeting that if you look at my current finance director's report, which is not on the agenda for tonight, but I said the State Highway Improvement Fund is basically $50,000, and the permissive tax fund, where we typically pay for roads, has about $20,000 in it. So that is correct.
Money came in for permissive road tax and that?
No. We have about $20,000 that's been in the permissive auto fund as of right now.
Okay.
That's typically where we pay for roads, those two funds, which is Fund 202 and 203.
I'd like to have an address, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I want to finish up here a little bit, I'm still here.
Oh, yeah, you can, you can have it, you can, you come back.
I'm still on my address, wait a minute, I want to get, I want to get.
How many addresses do you get?
I mean, how many, I'm still on my three minutes or so. I can ask questions, can I? What I wanted to know is, who guaranteed that this would be lower? Who guaranteed?
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized to respond?
Please, Mr. Lynch, could you answer?
Yeah, the engineers have not issued me a guarantee.
Huh?
It's an engineer's opinion.
I can't hear.
Engineers don't issue written guarantees, they issue what's called an engineer's opinion of cost. That's what engineers do, they don't issue a guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
There is no guarantee.
Okay, here's something I want to bring up real quick here. I'm going to start real quick here, because you have Section 8, Article 3, and it says here, this is from April 6, 2020, and it says, attorney, when we went through this emergency thing and that, it says, "Attorney Fritz explained that if the resolution passed declares an emergency, however, did not have a unanimous vote, therefore the city manager will still be required to go through proper bidding procedures if required. The motion declares a state of emergency for the city. Bariak said he did not understand. Attorney Fritz explained that by not having a unanimous vote, the city manager was still required to get bid. It does not mean that an emergency declared, that there was not an emergency declared by the city. The resolution was passed, we have a declared emergency for the city, he still has to get bids for contract because it was not unanimous. Mr. Lynch added that if something was beyond the statutory limit, he was still required to bid it regardless of the emergency." Now, no, here's the bid from the 12th, it was in the paper and it was pulled down when I wasn't sponsoring, because nobody has told me how many metric, how much it's going to take, and what we're going to get, two inches, five inches, or whatever, and I'm not writing a blank check. In other words, I don't go ahead and say, "Hey, whatever you want to charge me, charge me, I'm responsible for the taxpayers' dollars." Nobody from the engineer has come down here and even given us a bid, I mean, even got involved in this to say what the approximate price is going to be. So how can you say we're going to save $40,000 or $50,000? Who told you that, Mr. Lynch?
All right, Mr. Lynch, you have the floor. Mr. Bariak, wrap up, so he can answer the question.
Sure. Mr. Bariak, gentleman's name is Kurtz, Paul Kurtz, K-U-R-T-Z. He works for a company called Thomas Folk Engineering Company. In fact...
They're not involved in this.
Let him answer.
In fact, they...
Are they a bidding agent?
Mr. Bariak, let him answer, you asked a question, he's trying to answer.
In fact, that engineer wrote the specifications for First Street.
There's nothing in...
Call him up.
There's nothing in here about specifications, there's nothing in... Here's the bid that went out, and it was canceled by you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Mr. Alberini?
My friend, Mr. Bariak, I'm not sure what the point is here, but I will tell you this, okay? Hold on, I'm watching, hold on, hold on, okay? But we have other awards that would sure take those projects. I'm sure the people on Elizabeth Street would like some, I'm talking, I'm sure the people on Albert Street would like something, I'm sure the people on West River would like something, so I'm not sure what the point is. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Wait a minute, I want a second to talk.
You've already had 10.
You've had about 10 minutes on your first.
Also, also under ordinances, under ordinances, it says that if the money isn't budgeted, first of all, and this money isn't budgeted, this is a loan, and I was told it was going to be $220,000. I don't mind spending the money, but I, I don't know if it's, we could have got a lower bid. What we gotten back in May or June or whatever, March or January or February, everything should go out for bid. People are hungry right now, asphalt's down more. I just know one thing too, without the money being budgeted under an ordinance, it says, council has, it says, "Council may also authorize expenses funded by ordinances under expenditures, unless the expenditure is authorized in a budget adopted by council." This money wasn't in the budget, we have to go out, it says we have to go out for bids. I just know, you have not told me, Mr. Lynch, that we're going to save money, and from what I understand...
I think he said $50,000 we're going to save.
How, how do you know that? Who told you? Oh, he said that? Where'd he pick that out of?
No, here's what I would say.
Hold on, Mr. Alberini, let him finish. Hold on. Mr. Bariak's got the floor.
I've asked a question, that's all.
Okay, who's, who's, Mr. Alberini?
Mr. Lynch, your question again, where are we going to save the $50,000?
Mr. Alberini has the floor.
I say call to vote, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynch, did you want the floor?
No, I'm happy to let it go to Mr. Chairman.
Okay, roll call.
Bariak?
No.
Sevett?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Pass. Stop. You know what, we wonder why we look like a circus. There's a right way of doing things, stop, stop.
Mr. Mayor, we need to take care of this.
Yeah, where's the, where's the police officer at? Bring him in.
Whoa.
Get him out, get him out, get him out. I think that's the second meeting on a roll for him. I mean, we come here, we have five people on council, we have law directors, we have a city manager, we have a finance director, we have people that come, you discuss things, there's a right way of doing things, sit in your seats, making noises, heckling, and all this, isn't the right way of doing it. We're doing our job, that's why we have, that's why we have five people on the council. We have a motion that any improvements or additions to any city park property must first go through the Park and Recreation Commission for their approval or denial and recommendations to the city council. Do we have a...
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Is it, is it possible to amend that, to say, instead of saying, "Perk and Rex, all commissions," you know, I mean, any improvements are to the city parks, but we need to use all of our committees, we don't use our committees. Do we need a separate motion for the other committees too?
I think we need a separate motion.
Yeah, thank you for hearing on that matter, I'd like you to schedule that as a separate motion, only because I want to isolate each of the different things that apply to those committees, all right?
All right, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we vote on this one? Okay, roll call.
Sevett?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Pass. Okay, motion to schedule the first meeting in September for Tuesday, September 8, at 6:00 PM, because the city offices are closed on Monday for Labor Day. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, not roll call.
Alberini?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Sevett?
Yes.
Okay, pass. Okay, and...
Mr. Mayor, can I speak for a moment, please?
Sure.
In regards to Resolution 23-2020, I don't know if I can abstain from that, since we do business with Shelly and Sands.
Yeah, we already voted on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, how about that, honesty? Would you say?
Let's, let's get rid of the back and forth talk, and let's grow up.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor for a moment? May I speak to Mr. Alberini in private for just two seconds?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
What was that? What was that, Mr. Alberini?
My comment, I withdraw that, I'm changing the vote.
Okay. Okay, and under new business, we have the change to meeting rules, do we have a motion on that?
Yes, that's me, okay. I would like the change in the council rules, modify the rule order of business to remove Section 11, public comments, and order business for special meeting, remove Section 8, effective immediately.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, keep us quiet in here.
Second.
Any comments, discussion?
What are we, what are we removing, the further comments at the end?
At the end, at the end, at the end.
We have a second, which was Lyle Wright. Terry.
You know the government's for the people, not the people.
Stop. It hasn't even been passed, so... Do we have a second on that, or no?
Yeah, we can discuss it, I second it.
Okay, Alberini, discussion.
I would like to know why we need to remove the discussion, why this council would want to remove the discussion.
You don't have the floor, John, she does.
I do.
She, she has the floor because she made the vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The people do not know how to behave. This is the second time we've had to have the police remove people. I don't want to hear it, you're too volatile, you're rude.
You have to know why you look like fools, because you don't know how to govern.
Yeah.
Chief, chief, next person makes, if she's going to leave, she has to leave, we have business to take care of. Next person that talks out, start running them out.
Well, I'm leaving now, then.
See ya.
Bye.
Excuse me.
You guys don't listen to us anyways, so it's not even worth it. Come on, look, you guys work for us.
Mr. Mayor?
Point of order.
No point of order, come on. Yeah, it is a point of order.
Look, it happens all the time. I know the public people, come on, it's a joke.
Mr. Mayor, can, can you give me a second, because if, if I remember correctly, there was a, there was a public comment...
Hold on a second, before you make your point, let me, let me just check to make sure Ms. Bray Meyer's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm finished, you don't have... I'm sorry. I, I remember back a few years that we had public comments at the beginning of the meeting also, and I believe that those were removed for the same reasons that Ms. Bray just brought up, and if you give me a second... Yeah. Mr. Mayor, bear with me a couple of minutes as I go through this. Ms. Hoffman stated that she sat on this council and listened to the people call people clowns and listened to people called point of order, and she stated that Mr. Luana Wusu, that he should consider resigning since he couldn't handle what the audience had to say about him, or what the people of the city of Newton Falls had to say about him. Mr. Luana Wusu questioned that this bordered on personal attacks. Mr. Luana Wusu stated that the problem he sees is there is a small minority of people who continue to disrupt the meetings. Mr. Luana Wusu asked the mayor to take control of the meetings, use the gavel, rule somebody out of order if needed, and ask them to leave, or if you have to press charges on them, do what you need to do. Mr. Bariak stated that he felt council showed a circle and pattern of vindictiveness. Could you take that down, so I can... He also commented that the information from the last meeting showed that Mr. Luana Wusu kept asking about limiting public comments from non-resident speakers. I'm having trouble hearing Mr. Waddell.
You guys snowball, you snowball, you snowball. I try to be lenient, you abuse it, you take a foot. You go nowhere else, no other community, no other board, do they carry on like this?
Give me a second, I'm kind of not prepared for this. Now, I'm going to save that one, that's, that's an interesting, I'm going to save this for Mr. Ms. Moran stated at a meeting that we were not, that there was no professionalism, and that, and that there needed to be, that the, they were acting like a bunch of two-year-olds, and Mr. Luana Wusu called point of order because that was an accusation. Then Mr. Bariak had a lot to say, and Mr. Luana Wusu stated again, it was then founded an accusation and made a point of order, and then, Mr. Luana... And then, Mr. Luwanawasu made a motion to instruct the law director to look into changing council rules so that the first public comments were restricted to agenda items only. This would make it more consistent with other meetings. Hoffman said his previous council moved this out. And then Mr. Luwanawasu made a motion, seconded by Ms. Johnson, to do away with the public comments, uh, on the agenda, and make them agenda items only. That's all I have.
Any other, any other discussion or comments?
Um, I do, Mr.?
Mr. Albrighty.
It's, uh, I listened to this. It's not, it would not be my goal to take away the citizen's right to speak. I will tell you that. I came from, my background's a township trustee. And, um, the individuals, the individuals who spoke at our township meetings had the opportunity to speak at the beginning of, the beginning of the meeting, say what they have to say, get it, get it out of the way, uh, first and foremost. We never stopped any from doing that. So this is not unusual for me personally as to have, you know, here you go, have your say at the beginning of the meeting so we can proceed through the council meeting a little bit more smoother. But what's happening is, and I, again, I don't want to take away anybody's right to speak. What's happening is we're rehashing stuff. If you guys want to yell at us, that's fine. Do it all at the beginning of the meeting. There's no need to come back around and, and do it again, and again, and again, and again, and again. Like I said, I'm not going to take away anybody's rights to do so. But as you hear the comments tonight, um, I think the council meetings need to be more fluid, um, more respectful on both sides. And, you know, I'm a firm believer, you have, you know, if you're a town, or excuse me, township, if you're a village resident, absolutely, you should have your say-so in that format. I have no problem with that whatsoever. So, um, you know, I just want to see the meet, here, we're here at 7:30. And a lot of it is being bickering back and forth. You know, that's not what we're here for. This is the village's business to discuss, okay? Everybody needs to say what they got to say. Let's move on. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak.
I, I don't know if the, what you people out there see, but what I see is, we're not, we're, we're moving backwards instead of forward with this community. It's a one, it's a one-man show. Uh, I don't mind anybody, I don't mind anybody criticizing me or anything. It's part of the turf. If somebody has something to say after the agenda where they disagreed with the vote or that, I figure they ought to say it, especially if it's going to get two readings and that. I, I just feel the public should have the right to, to speak. I don't go, I don't condone name-calling. I don't condone, uh, uh, people getting excited and, uh, using foul language. But I do not want to see anybody not have the right to speak. When we don't have the right, when we don't have the right to speak, what are we, what have we, what have we turned ourselves into? Um, I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
Just to clarify, and I think Mr. Attorney Fritz would clarify this. State law gives, uh, people the privilege to speak. It's not a right. You're using, you're using the wrong word. It's not a right to speak. It's a privilege. That's all it is. It's a privilege, not a right. So just. You've had that privilege for ten years. You. It's a right.
Back and forth.
It's not a privilege.
We're not going to yell back and forth. You just thought. Anybody else? You know, I, I would never be in favor of silencing our community. Never. Um, but when you come to a council meeting, you come for a purpose, and that's to take care of the business that's on the agenda. We meet, we're meeting today about what's right here, to make, uh, individuals discuss, and individuals come forward. And, and you have the ability to come forward and you present your thoughts. And then, at the end of the meeting, or during the reports time, you're answered. There's, there's a fluid way of, of doing so, you know? But the, uh, the second reading, or the, the second, um, um, comments has not turned into anything but a, a name-calling thing or anything like that. You, you're not silenced. You still have the ability to come. But we come here to discuss every ordinance, everything that's on here. Anybody else? All right, roll call.
Waddell.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Bariak.
No.
Savet.
Yes.
Albrighty.
Yes.
Pass. Okay, um, closing remarks. First ward, Mr. Savet.
Uh, no comments at this time.
Second ward, Mr. Bariak.
Yes. Tonight, I asked some questions. And I don't feel I was given the answers that I would like. We can say one thing, one meeting, and the next meeting we do just the opposite. It all, you know, it all, it doesn't matter. I, I still didn't get the answers on how we were going to save the money and how, and how we can go ahead and, uh, without a, without an ordinance, go ahead and spend taxpayers' dollars on a resolution. So, the people in this community are going to have to decide which way they want it to go. I just feel that I'll keep doing the best I can do, what, what, what part that is. I'll do the best I can. Thank you.
Mr. Waddell, third ward.
Nothing else.
Mrs. Bray Meyer, fourth ward.
Nothing.
Mr. Albrighty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just want to say this, first of all. And I appreciate you, everybody, coming out tonight. I really do. Um, we agree to disagree sometimes. But the false narrative that's given that council's fractured, that council's not getting along, council's not doing this. You know, the administration in the council is functioning just fine. You know, I want to point out to my friend, Mr. Bariak, here because.
Don't point at me.
I just did.
Stop.
I just did.
Don't point at me, please.
So I will point out to Mr., my friend, Mr. Bariak, it seems like if we don't do things Mr. Bariak's way, the council's fractured. Yeah, I'll give you a good example. When we had contractor registration three years ago, and Mr. Bariak got mad at us for not voting for contractor registration, that's when things started going downhill. That's when council became fractured. So I would say this, the city of Newton Falls is functioning just fine. We communicate with each other on a daily basis. We talk to each other on a daily basis. We discuss things with each other on a daily basis. Maybe the public doesn't see what we talk about. For instance, when Dr. V talked about the, the tax amendments on real estate, we've talked about that for a couple of years now. So behind the scenes, you may not see it up here, but we are doing things, okay? This, to me, is becoming just abject theater where citizens are coming in and, you know, we are the elected officials in Newton Falls. And I, I'm very humbled to be here, trust me. I am elected, Ms. Fletcher. Sorry, I am.
You are. I'm elected.
Okay, but beside that, he's appointed by council rules and by the charter. All right, I can't go, go back and forth with you. But, you know, I always am mindful that, um, a lot of things have been said on some of these Facebook pages, that council's fractured, um, we're the worst people around, yada, 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 yada. And, you know, here's what I would say. Words mean things. You can either uplift people, or you can tear people down. And I get it. People want that opportunity to come in and vent and, and things like that. We've been elected to make the decisions on behalf of the cities, citizens of Newton Falls. Some of those, those decisions, some of those decisions you folks may not like, that's your right to come up here and vent. This council person has no problem with that, doing so whatsoever. But at the same time. But that is, but at the same. Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it at that, sir.
Okay. Mr. C. What's that? I thought you had something for us. Okay. Okay. Mr. City Manager, you have anything to report?
Uh, no, nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I, I'm not sure why I have to go back and explain every step of every decision I make, but I want to make sure it's on the record because apparently this is something that makes Mr. Bariak unable to get over. The non-emergency sections we have, this will be in the minutes, 1212 dash 04, 1212 dash 08, 1212 dash 10, 1214 dash 02, and 1214 dash 17. There may be more out there. We don't go through everyone. But those are ones that were emergency ordinances that failed to get significant votes, become an emergency and pass, and were accepted as a first reading and placed on the next meeting for a second reading. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Why didn't you give them to me?
Mr. City Manager, you have the floor.
Nothing further.
Okay, we have a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
During the meeting. We have a second.
Final second.
Roll call.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Albrighty.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Davy Jones.
The charter allows them to change the rules. No, 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 no. The charter allows them by a majority, two-thirds of the vote, to change council rules. It's not a change of conscience.
What are those?
That is correct. Similar to off the, would I go off the?